Mr. Miller.
We had a very productive meeting on the 23rd of March and we had EPD in attendance. And we covered quite a bit of ground with the comprehensive plan process and where things are at right now. So expect to see some additional information for, to review from EPD in the coming months, I would say. And Roger, did we have a specific follow-up date or deadline for them?
We did not.
Okay. And I think Roger, I believe Roger sent out the previous comprehensive plan for everybody to review. So you should all take a look at that before we have a council level discussion at what the comprehensive plan should look like. So I encourage you when those, I think, did those minutes become available for community economic development?
I don't, Sarah, I don't think they're ready yet, are they?
No, okay. But when they do, I would encourage you to, to take a look. It was a, it was a really good discussion that we had and covered a lot in terms of what the vision was for the comprehensive plan and, and our goals as far as economic development. And we had, at that meeting, we had manager Sersky, we had Rebecca Yerick, we had the entire committee. So it was very productive conversation. That's all I have right now for community economic development. And I know that the manager has been working and Rebecca, Rebecca have been working on the outdoor seating for Railroad Avenue and talking to business owners downtown, specifically the two adjacent neighboring properties that have, well, one has requested it, the other one seems interested. So we'll, we'll, we'll keep moving that forward, hopefully. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miller or other members of the committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Finance Administration and Ordnance Committee. Mr. Anthony.
Good evening. I would just give an overview of the committee meeting that we had on March 10th. I don't believe I've done that yet. So we had a couple of agenda items that we wanted to talk through, mostly setting up our goals for the year. We discussed the appointment of Ben Reed, which we've actually executed on as a council. We discussed bringing in PFM to do a little education piece for the finance committee to make sure that we are on top of our game for what comes over the next year. We also talked about the fact that although the committee is not responsible for the comprehensive plan, we want to be as involved as we can be to help with the financing of the items within it. We talked about committee recommendations as it relates to a new swap body truck that we need, maybe, and a discussion on a multi-year budgeting, discussion on, talking about, what was the other thing in here? Do we see Purdue outsourcing, right? So talking about a little bit about outsourcing too. And so we set up a couple of goals for ourselves. I'm reading off of minutes that haven't been approved yet, so they'll be available after the next finance committee meeting. And that's all I have.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Anthony or members of the committee? Hearing none, we move on to the Personnel Committee.
We have nothing other than what Sarah already mentioned.
Okay. Are you guys planning to get together shortly now that you're on the mend, Mr. Whitcomb?
I hope so.
All right, that sounds good. Appreciate that. Okay, moving on, property, parks and recreation, Mrs. Agerton.
Yep, we met on the 18th of March. We just reviewed what was going on with the pool. We also did discuss the community garden, garden. There is interest in making more plots available in the future. So we are gonna take that over to EAC, make sure that they're in agreement with it. It was a good meeting, short and sweet, just kept them aware of what the recreation committee was doing. We executed an Easter, a safe Easter egg hunt this past month, so all good things coming out of there.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Agerton or the committee?
And PS, there is an agenda item on about the mowing contract. Sorry, I forgot about that.
Any questions? Any discussion? All right, we'll address the mowing thing when we get to the agenda, I believe. Okay, thank you. Public Works and Safety, Mr. Pellman.
Okay, the Public Works and Safety Committee did not meet, but Roger has something interesting he'd like to tell everyone about involving some good work for some high school students that have been working alongside him. I'll just let him take it from here.
Thank you, Councilman Pellman. About nine months ago, there was a group of STEM students and doing a senior project at the high school. They approached me about some ideas that they could maybe help us address in the Borough Mechanicsburg. And after a pretty lengthy meeting, we were throwing ideas back and forth. One of the things they come up with was pedestrian crossing, something that they're used to seeing, being the fact that they walk to school, so on and so forth. The students that were involved are under Mr. Statler, Statler as the advisor and coach, and they're Heather Kressler, Max Caveda, Cedar Brill, Ryan Talton. And they actually built something that was really impressive. I'm gonna show you a picture of it here in a minute. But if you guys get up around Marble and Arch Street, there is a, they put up a, a pedestrian warning sign for the traffic up there. We picked Walnut or Mark, yeah, Marble and, and Arch Street because there's no stop signs on Arch Street. And it is a section that goes across to the school, safe routes to school. So what we did is, as you can see in the picture there, they've, they take it, took a sign, put some LEDs on it, it is solar powered, that one is. The other, the sensor is actually down at the corner of, on the other side of the street, at the corner of Arch Street. And when someone walks up to go across there, this sign actually lights up. They also have a dimmer switch on this, so it's brighter during the day and not quite as bright at night. So there's, there was a lot of thought, a lot of effort put into this, and we deployed it yesterday. So we're gonna, they're gonna keep an eye out on it, see how it goes. And the one thing we don't have is tracking on that yet. But they actually, it's actually an impressive device they come up with. It's a whole lot cheaper than the ones we can buy off the shelf. And there's a lot less digging, a lot less, a whole lot less disturbing of the ground around it to put these things in. So they're working on improving it a little bit. They want to make the sensor not relying on batteries, they want to make it also solar powered. So the one of those signs, for us to buy one of those signs with all the solar stuff on it, and it ranges anywhere from $15 to $2,500 because of the, the size of the sign and stuff like that. So it looks rather simplistic, but I'll tell you what, it is, it's an impressive, impressive piece. So three of the students in the picture there, Cedar was not there, Cedar had to work. And some of you may remember Cedar from the Gogo pit. So if you guys get a chance, swing up around, take a look at it. We're gonna have it up there for a while yet to see how it goes and see if we can talk them into making some more of them for us. But if you see these guys, I did send an email to Mark Lighty and Greg Longwell to let them know that I was, I was pretty impressed with what they come up with. And it's, it's actually, it functions the way it's supposed to, even in broad daylight. So if anybody gets a chance, swing up around, take a look at it, tell us your thoughts. And I'll get it back to those guys and we'll go from there. So, all right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Roger. That's, that's all that from Public Works and Safety. However, my first instinct when I see something like that is, and having handled 31 years of criminal mischief complaints, I hope it stands up to, to those that have bad things in mind for it when they see it.
There's probably about a three-foot length of rebar holding that in the ground right there, on both, on two sides. So somebody's gonna have to work to get that out.
Yeah, that's good. That's all we have, though.
Pretty impressive. I'm very impressed with what they've done. And it's great that the kids are that forward-thinking to help, help us, help the community out. It's really, really amazing. Of course, I'm looking at some copyrights and financial gain for these young folks, perhaps, down the line, which would be awesome.
And we did, we talked a lot about stormwater, we talked about, you know, all kinds of stuff. The stormwater stuff was gonna be a major undertaking for, for them. And theirs was more on the mechanical side, not so much the civil engineering side. So this, this really appealed to them and we kept coming back to this, this subject that they know a lot about because they walk everywhere. I mean, they, two of them on there don't have their driver's license yet. So they know what it's like to cross some of the streets. And we chose this intersection too because these are both borough roads. So we didn't have to deal with getting the state permission or anything like that. So we'll see how it works and go from there.
Sounds great. Anything else, Mr. Pellman?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Pellman or the committee? Hearing none, the committee workshop section of the council meeting is now adjourned. Interrupted, it is 7:30. And I would like to call this Borough Council Meeting of the Borough Mechanicsburg of April 6, 2021 to order. Before we have the pledge of allegiance, I want to review some of the rules of virtual meetings for those of you who are joining us this evening. Those rules were posted on the website as well as in the waiting room for the meeting. But I want to review that public microphones will be unmuted to make comments during the public comment section of the meeting on an individual basis. This will be so that the comments can be clearly heard by all. The public can use the raise your hand feature of the software and their microphone will be unmuted for them to comment. Members of the public must state their name and address before proceeding with their comment so that we can get proper registry for the minutes of the meeting. If a commenter would like to have their comment in the minutes unabridged, it must be submitted to the Borough Office in writing. And lastly, should there be an executive session of council, we would adjourn and have to adjourn to an executive session. At that time, the host will remove the public and any staff not involved in that meeting and stop the recording and lock the meeting to further entry. If there's action to be taken after that session, at my discretion, the host will then unlock the meeting and begin recording again. And those of you who are waiting patiently in the wings are free to join back in at that time. All right, the meeting's been called to order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Mrs. Martin, roll call.
President Weber.
Here.
Vice President Miller.
Here.
Councilwoman Agerton.
President.
Councilman Anthony.
Here.
Councilman Booker.
Here.
Councilman Pellman.
Here.
Councilman Whitcomb.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Solicitor Cassidy. Okay.
Did you hear me?
Oh, there you go.
Breaking up a little bit.
Engineer Rogowski.
Here.
Chief Myers.
Here.
Chief Neff.
Here.
EMC Wardle.
He was here.
He's here.
Yeah, you can see him. You're muted somehow. Manager Sersky.
Here.
Assistant Manager Boyer. We have a forum.
Thank you very much. Are there any guests this evening?
There are a couple of people here to speak about some agenda items. And Joni Schenk is here from Cheryl DeLuger's office, just to observe and listen to the discussion.
All right. Are there any citizens' comments or requests at this time? You can use your raise your hand button so the manager can see you if you're... I'm not seeing any at this time. If you want to make comment, please interrupt me. All right, hearing none, we will move on to correspondence. Mr. Sersky.
There was one piece of correspondence that we got, and that was a thank you from the Wildcat Association for the donation for the installation of the water line.
That's all I have, sir. For the purpose of the minutes, if you're recording that, Sarah, it should be Wildcat Foundation, not Wildcat.
I'm sorry. I've been doing that all day.
All right, thank you. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the meeting from March 16th. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that.
The motion was made by Mr. Whitcomb. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the vote as unanimous.
And the minutes are approved. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the engineer's report. Mr. Rogowski.
Chairman, just two things to report. Number one, the pool project, if you've been over there recently or seen it, the floor of the pool in the deep end has been poured and they have shot blasted all three pools at this point. I understand they were waiting for favorable weather to get the coating back on, but we're in pretty good shape with respect to that particular project. Second item is related to some discussions we had with Suez. They are gonna be getting, beginning another phase of water work in the borough. Hopefully, this will continue to be a little bit better relationship as we move down the road with them. So we had a very productive meeting and I think some new faces were at the table and will, will do better moving forward.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Rogowski? Hearing none, we'll move on to the committee liaison reports. Downtown Partnership, Mrs. Agerton.
So the Downtown Partnership, we're continuing to meet virtually on Zoom. They're hard at work with the Community Day and the 100th Anniversary of Soldiers and Sailors for August 7th. There is a meeting tomorrow night scheduled for Zoom, just as a check-in, invitations have been sent out. They also have partnered with the Lions Club for the 17th to celebrate Earth Day and they'll be doing a beautification of Main and Market. So if anyone is bored between the hours of 10:30 and 12:30, I'm sure they will not say no to ask some extra volunteers.
Very good. Any, any questions for Mrs. Agerton in regard to that? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the library report. Mr. Pellman.
Okay, well, April 4th to April 10th of this month is actually National Library Week. And we are, we should all pay recognition to the good things that libraries in our community do. And no exception, our library and all the good things it does for the community. And coinciding with National Library Week is Library Giving Day, which is Wednesday, April 7th. If you are so inclined, and we hope that you are, if you would like to give a small donation to the library, the day that would be really great would be Wednesday, April 7th, which is tomorrow. And they accept payments through PayPal, a check, or even in person. There is a dine-out this month for the library and specifically for the Friends of the Mechanicsburg Library or the Simpson Library, and it's at Isaacs. The unique thing about this dine-out is you can go to either of Isaacs' locations at the West Shore Plaza or the one on Ritter Road. And if you go on Wednesday, April 14th, that's specifically set aside for our library and from 11:00 in the morning till 8:00 in the evening, 15% of your total food bill will go to the Friends of the Mechanicsburg or the Simpson Library. And you must have a flyer to, in order to get the portion of your expense donated. And you can get them online or go to the library and they'll get one for you. It's, the library is also making note of National Volunteer Week. And that's for volunteers in any, you know, method of work or any kind of field you may be involved in. Specifically, our library will be displaying on their screens the good, good things about the volunteers that work in our library. If it weren't for the volunteers we have at the Simpson Library, there'd be a lot more problems. And they, they work very smoothly with the, with the volunteers that help out there. The library is still selling t-shirts to make money. And last but not least, this month's trivia at home contest is Saturday, April 24th from 6:00 to 8:00. It's on Zoom. You must register. It's from 6:00 till 8:00 on the Saturday, April 24th. And the subject matter is Nancy Drew. So if you're, you have any expertise in, in that field, please plan on getting a team together and playing in the trivia at home contest with the library sponsors. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pellman? Hearing none, we move on to the Museum Association, just a couple of items. The train display at the freight station is going to continue to be open for the rest of the year, at least at this point in time, since we missed out on a lot of that during December with COVID. So if you like trains and you have kids, it's something nice to do maybe on a Saturday. With regard to the Frankfurter Gardens area and tavern, the tavern windows are almost all done and replaced for the new upgrade on that. The fence is now in, surrounding the property and connecting the tavern to the new outbuilding. Water is connected, electric is on. And I understand in the very near future, there's going to be some open fire cooking demonstrations and, and seminars on a, you'd have to pre-register for it. So you can check that out on the website. But we're gearing up to finish the project, the Eagle Scout project. And you mentioned Cedar Brill earlier, his brother is, is doing the, the three gardens. There'll be two herb gardens and a vegetable garden in the front. We'll be planting some trees and shortly we'll be placing some benches and getting the thing all spruced up and ready to go. So that's, that's the news for right now. There'll be more news shortly with regard to that. That's all I have. Any questions, comments?
Gary, I will say one thing. Gary, Gary.
Yes.
I drive by there almost every day and it really looks nice.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I think the fence has really tied everything together, makes it really look
Yeah, it did.
like it is something now, instead of a building sitting there by itself. All right, thank you. Appreciate the comment. All right, Downtown Program Service Manager Rebecca Yerick. I see you right in the center of my screen, so I know you're here. But you're muted.
It's me.
There you are.
I have my little phone, my little phone here. Okay, you have a copy of my report. I apologize for it being delivered later than, than usual. We've had, business is brisk, lots of things going, good things going on. A meeting with Mark Walker owns the property that's at the corner of North Walnut and East Main Street, the one that was hit by a truck from CR England, different truck, but twice within one week. We're gonna talk about a project to remove that overhang side the first floor, put perhaps an eyebrow between the two so that we can, as best as we can, match the top to the, the upper floors to the, the lower floor. We have to move the AC unit, we have to rewrap the gutters, the downspouts and all because of where they currently are located. And that would be an about-face and potentially a Cumberland Street View grant for that project. Meeting with him late next week to talk about his interest in, to see what he would like to do and what we would require be done for the use of those grants. Meanwhile, the project at 30 South Market Street where Smoke and Pickles Artisan Butcher Shop is located is done in terms of the storefront and the building. The awning was added a couple of weeks ago. It's a full-width awning, so it disguises it, masks that weird-shaped overhang that was off compared to the roof line. And I think it looks pretty, pretty sharp. So that was an about-face grant project and we had a Cumberland Street View grant for that one as well. Brittle Bark is moving again. They will be moving here in the next few weeks. They're moving directly across the street in a unit that they used to lease for events and for extra storage. That will be their shop and their manufacturing location. They will be open seasonally, beginning in a few weeks, so around the holidays. And they will be open select hours each week for folks to pick up orders that they have placed at the business. Diane Krulak is the owner and she says she learned an awful lot during COVID. She has another store, a different brand, in Camp Hill. And she wanted to keep both open, but her business model has, has changed. So we're keeping them. The hours will be a little different there. The, what I refer to as the boathouse, I think it looks like a boathouse. This property that's right across from the Simpson Library, that was part of Wilcox Forging Company for many years and was at one time the shop class venue for Mechanicsburg High School. That property is for sale. Owners Greg and Mary Barker now reside in Florida. They've sold their home here locally. And I showed it to several interests. It's a very, very unique property and he sunk hundreds of thousands of dollars into it. It was pretty cool when we were touring the property. Some of the people who were on some of those tours had been there either as related to Wilcox or maybe a Boy Scout trip that they were involved in that, that met there. So the asking price is $350, but the owners are taking proposals. If you know anyone who is interested, let me know. I was on those tours, scheduled those tours. It is not listed, but it, it will be at some point. It's a perfect live-work unit. The upper floor is a beautiful, really beautiful, every square inch considered in the design apartment. It also has some first-floor space as part of the apartment. And then the garage area to the right is a huge, right now, workshop. But it could be an artist's studio with a gallery, nicely landscaped yard. And then the parking that is just beyond the hedges that looks like it goes with John Gross or the library or just, you're just not sure. The section of that parking lot that abuts the hedges, this property line, goes with, conveys with this property. So you have nine or so parking spaces along there. The, the bag processors property at North York and West Allen Street is under contract. I spoke with Bill Gladstone, who is the listing agent, and Kyle, I want you to pay attention to this. He indicated that, I have two questions for him, of course, who bought it and what do they want to do? He said that the owners have a number of gas stations, which is always code for He said that the owners have a number of gas stations, which is always code for gas and convenience store, and uh that they were going to use it for storage. Now, when I ask people that question, um, that's the second most popular answer. The first one is they're not sure how they're going to use it. So that's what he indicates. My second question to him was the other Lumbee property, which uh Luke bought from Everly's maybe four or five years ago, right next to Classic Rock, same side of the street. That was not part of the sale. The Lumbee offices have moved down there. I saw a new railing, so I suspect that's what prompted that. And they'll slowly be moving any stock inventory that they have from the one location to the other. Earth Day is quickly approaching. Most of the Downtown Mechanicsburg Partnership Earth Day activities this year are uh virtual, but you can still get involved. The, you'd look at the really cool uh rain barrels. They're always nice to see, they're particularly nice. There are five of them. They were designed and painted by um students from area high schools, including Mechanicsburg, and you can uh bid on those online. That's what I have. Anything for me? No?
Hearing, oh, did I hear someone? Sorry.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any additions to the agenda?
No, I have no additions to the agenda, sir. But I do have a, a question here. We have a, someone in here in the meeting named Jignesh is what came across their screen. Um, can I get a name and for a right name for the uh minutes, please?
Yes, my name is Jignesh and I am the owner of the Son of Market. Last name is Patel.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patel. I did not recognize your first name. I apologize.
That's okay. No problem.
Thank you. All right. We need the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Pelman beat you to it. Mr. Whitcomb, is there a second?
Okay, I'll second.
I would assume you would do that. Um, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the agenda is approved. These are the action items for Borough Council. Mr. Szczesinski?
Action items before Borough Council on April 6th, 2021. Discussion and action to approve the special events application for the ranch drop fundraiser to be held in Memorial Park on Saturday, July 17th, 2021 from 9:00 AM? Question mark. And that was attachment one in your packets.
All right. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Aggerton. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded.
Was that you, John? Thank you. Thank you. Um, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Do we have an idea, Mr. Westby, on the question mark, how long it's going to last?
Well, the reason we have the, the question mark on it is on the uh, one of the vendors has a movies that we were proposing for 8:30 to maybe 10:30. That is still hanging in the, the balance uh to be determined. Thank you for the approval and uh COVID issues. If we're allowed to do it, uh, we'll get the movie set up and give you a timeframe a little as soon as I can.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I just needed clarification for the rest of council on that.
Thank you.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded. Um, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Next item, please.
Discussion and action on the Phase 2 South Mountain Trolley Greenway Study Phase 2 Contract with Buchard Horn for Engineering Services.
All right. For purposes of discussion, could we have a, a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Sarah, you made the motion and Mr. Booker, I believe you were the second?
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Is there any discussion? I'm sure there will be a little bit. Perhaps not.
Did, did we get uh the, I know there was, in the past, there was a concern about like um reviewing this document. Um, was that, was that done by our solicitor?
Yes. Uh, well, actually I sent him the, he has the contract and it, and what we were discussing before the last meeting, uh, when I raised my concerns. We have since had a meeting with the Rail Trail Group. Um, one of the things with an agreement is the Rail Trail Group is not a legal entity for us to enter into an agreement with them or uh, you know, some, something of that sort. So it wouldn't be enforceable or anything like that. But what I do have is um Tyler Smedley from DCNR, who is, who is administering the grant for DCNR, and Stephanie Williams from um Cumberland County, who is all, has the $17,500 part of the grant. Um, they have, because this is an unbudgeted um expense, they said that we can get up to 50% of our, of the money from both of them, which would give us around $17,500 to start paying the bills with. So we wouldn't be paying anything out of our pockets um and then asking for reimbursement. We would have some seed money to start this project with. Um, the other part of that was the potentially contracting with McNeese, um, the law firm in Harrisburg. They're actually the ones that handle um Legacy Park um for landmark. And uh, I spoke to Mr. Cassidy about this. His firm is willing to take that and then we can use some of the seed money to actually pay Mr. Cassidy's time. He will segregate the bills when he sends it in. Um, this is mainly to look for a, the piece of property uh that is actually out beside the sewer plant road uh that according to Cumberland County, nobody owns right now. It kind of goes up and wraps around the back of the sewer plant. So it's all uh feasibility work that has to be done beforehand before they can start looking at putting a trail in. So um after the last meeting, I'm a lot more comfortable with it. Um, Benjamin Mike Sell from Buchard Horn is here, and so is Tanya Brown from the Rec Department to speak to this. They were both in attendance at that meeting. Um, so I'm, a lot of my concerns have been addressed through that meeting and speaking with Mr. Cassidy.
Thank you, Roger, for the update. Uh, for those guests that are here, would you, or you have any comments?
Yeah, this is, this has been Mike Sell with Buchard Horn. I'm the project lead engineer and landscape architect for this project. Um, and I just wanted to point out that our actual um proposal for a contract is um for $30,000 and the total budget is $35,000. Um, so there would be a cushion there. Typically, DCNR requires a 10% retainage at the end of the project. So even that, we wouldn't be cutting into that retainage. That additional $5,000 was for the legal review. It'd be potentially used by your solicitor, it sounds like. So um Roger, you'd have, you know, full control over, over that amount of money too. So um we shouldn't have any, we should be able to work the cash flows, is what I'm trying to say, so that you wouldn't, you wouldn't run into a problem with that.
Mrs. Brown, do you have anything to add? There you are.
Hey, sorry. Um, the only thing I have to add is that we came up with a communication plan with Microsoft Teams, uh, which Stephanie Williams does have a little bit of an issue with, but hopefully we can work through that with her so that everything is readily available to the entire team at all times, because it was putting Roger in a little bit of a bind, trying to follow all the emails with all the individuals on the team. So hopefully the Microsoft team is the answer, as well as I said, I would personally follow up with every meeting and make sure that all the questions were answered and that Roger was only brought into the loop when he needed to be. But I would communicate with Roger on a weekly basis in regards to the plans.
So is there any other discussion?
So basically, uh, the summary of what is said, has been said is that the money is not coming out of our budget in any way. It's more or less money that's, we're just like the middleman.
Pretty much. That's what it amounts to. Yes, Joe.
Flow through money, right?
Yep.
Which is the original understanding, I think, is what we had.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the actual original motion was that we would not spend any borough funds on this, this portion at least.
Right.
Okay.
I'm satisfied with this. It's.
Well, I'd like to point out that the rail trail in Newville, Carlisle and Pippersburg is great. Written on it many times.
You know, we, this is one of the things we discussed, wasn't it, Roger, at our Community and Economic Development Committee meeting, which was trails, walkability and connecting um, connecting various municipalities, especially that connection with Silver Spring right there and the communities that are uh to the north of us. Um, actually, very fastly growing area, so.
Okay. Unless I hear any other discussion or comments, I'll ask Mrs. Martin to do her thing.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion is approved. Thank you for everyone who uh gave your time tonight to help with this decision. Appreciate it. Next item, Mr. Szczesinski?
Great. Uh, there are four parts to this one. I'll read them all and uh you can decide how you want to do them, if you want to do them one at a time or, or separately. And I'm sure Engineer Rogowski will have a few comments on some of these. Discussion and action on waivers requested for 101 North Walnut Street Land Development Plan as follows. And these were attachments to 3A and 3B in your packets. 100% of existing impervious area when present shall be considered meadow in the model for existing conditions. Existing intersections impacted by the development traffic shall maintain a minimum LOS D for each traffic movement or in future base, or if future base without development traffic LOS is E, then mitigation shall be made to maintain LOS E with development traffic. Levels of service on East Allen at the intersection of North Walnut Street degrade to an LOS E during the PM and Saturday peak hours. That is from Section 22512 in the Sado. Stormwater management pipe collection and conveyance systems shall have a minimum diameter of 15 inches. That's from 26-125.9. Provide water quality volume reduction calculations in accordance with the requirements of this section, 26-123.
All right. You've all seen the attachments, I believe, as well. Um, do we have a motion? Not hearing one.
I'll move for the purpose of discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Aggerton. All right. It's been properly moved and seconded, and now we get to the discussion portion of the uh, the motion.
I think something that concerns me in particular is the idea of the uh waiver for the existing intersections impacted by development traffic shall maintain a minimal, or I'd, I'd like to get more information about it, I guess, because um with three more businesses going in that very congested area, I, I mean, if we're waiving some requirement that would try to mitigate that, I think I would not agree with that.
Mr. Rogowski?
Certainly. So I think uh Mr. Booker is absolutely correct, and this waiver does um require a little bit of discussion simply because it's not something that we see very often. So you take a look at the proposed plan. Um, people are probably aware, you know, based on looking at the plan, that there is additional like 3,700 square feet of new retail area proposed. The plan also proposes the closure of two existing full-service driveways that currently access directly from the property onto Walnut Street. So from the beginning, um, we have been an advocate of the closure of these two access drives. And the reason for that is from the perspective of what we call access management, all of a sudden, if you have a bunch of people trying to come in and go out those various driveways as well as the intersection at Allen and Walnut Street, you create, create conflicts or have the potential to create conflicts because of that traffic. So by shutting them off, we are actually improving an existing safety issue. But it does have a downstream effect, and that is what this waiver is all about. So by shutting off the ability for people to exit the property onto Walnut Street and funneling them all to one single area where those potential for conflicts are minimized, we obviously increase the number of trips that are going to um that particular intersection. So even if we shut off those intersection, or I'm sorry, those existing access, direct access points to Walnut Street, um, they, this, this waiver would still be required, even if they didn't build anything at all, um, simply because they'd be pushing the traffic out to that intersection. And currently, the intersection operates just on the edge of a D, um, a level of service D. Um, and you know, I think it's like two or three more trips uh added to the intersection would cause it to go to an E. So the reality is the actual development itself is causing very little additional traffic to be added to this. And that, it's more of a numbers issue than anything else. The actual delay that's added is like in the ballpark of 17 seconds. And it's typically for cars that are exiting, um, I'll say exiting Allen Street in the PM peak hour. So it's a very discreet movement. It's one movement of the intersection. The entire intersection does not degrade in capacity with respect to this plan. It's just cars that are being pushed to that intersection by the closure of those existing driveways, which is what we would want and is what we advocate for. PennDOT has a, I'll call it a fluff, a 10-second fluff. Um, they have the ability to be able to basically allow some, some, some uh mitigations to those numbers. We don't have that in our ordinance, so you know, PennDOT really can't even comment on this, but we can because of this section. Um, part of the agreement that we came to um with respect to this, um, supporting this waiver, at least from the engineering perspective, was a very thorough look at the size of the development that was proposed for the property. So if you'll recall, and this is flashing back a ways, and, and some council members may not be aware of it, the original plan um that was proposed was a 5,600 square feet or something like that. It was additional couple of units. So by reducing the number of units that were proposed for the property as well as that access management issue that we talked about with closing the existing driveways, we do support this particular waiver. So this waiver is unique to this particular project. Like I said, it's not something that is a wholesale waiving of traffic requirements or something like that. And overall, the actual intersection does not degrade in the, in the level of service.
Would um providing that waiver more or less, um, I mean, in an emergency situation, provide an issue with the, you have only really have one exit? Like especially with combustible materials at the site? I, that's something that also, I mean, if there's a big fire or something, I only have any one, it seems kind of, yeah.
I think in that scenario, people are going to go where they're going to go, whether there's an exit there or not. And you know, clearly they could exit onto Walnut Street the wrong way um in that, in that, in that configuration. They are widening the existing entrance from Allen Street um to be able to, to provide access for larger vehicles, so it will not just be a little driveway kind of that you can see today. It'll be much wider than that. So there will be the ability to create some outbound flow if they had to in an emergency situation.
That's the sunup, right?
Correct.
Are they, are they going to make any entrance anywhere else other than that one on Allen Street?
So there is a right-in-only entrance off of Walnut Street. So if you're traveling southbound on Walnut Street, you'll be able to make a right turn into the property. Um, and you would of course be able to make a right or a left turn into the property from, on Allen Street. Um, but then the only way out of that property in a regular traffic configuration would be to come back out on Allen Street.
And that's going to catch all the traffic.
That would be a tough left turn. I'm going to turn Walnut Street.
That, that is the particular movement, uh, Kyle. Like I said, in the PM, in the AM, it actually doesn't, doesn't do much. Um, it doesn't create a degradation, but yes, sitting there in the PM, there's going to be people waiting in that intersection. And they wait there today. So the, the only real, the other part of the issue is this, um, you know, the only real solution to that is, is either some type of signalization or um, you know, something of that nature. And the, the proximity of Allen Street to the railroad creates a number of different challenges for that. Um, not that it couldn't be done, but it's, it's, it's really frowned upon um for a number of different reasons. So that is not something that PennDOT is interested in going towards. Um, and we don't have a significant crash history there, to be honest with you. So um, you know, it really comes down to delay. And in this extent, we're, we're trading safety for delay uh in a good way. We're, we're improving a safety condition, you know, but we are creating a, you know, 17 seconds of more delay in that particular, in that one uh movement.
Yeah, I think the concern for me is that there's a, being so close to the library, it's a pedestrian sensitive area, so they are um improving a pedestrian situation, you know, right there. Um, also with walking on, on that side of Walnut Street and the in and out from, from the, from the gas station. But at the same time, from the gas station, but at the same time, you know, they're creating another one potentially here on you know, with the crossings on, on Allen and Walnut on that, at that intersection. But I think that's, it's a marginal improvement, but the other concern I have, which probably might be a better conversation for the, for the next agenda item is is the connectivity of the sidewalks within the, the site does not appear to be not appear to be great with the it does not appear that the sidewalk in front of the retail center connects with sidewalk on Allen Street. So that's what I'm like concerned with.
Well, there's not that much pedestrian traffic back in that area.
Let's not say that there won't be or ever won't be because that's when you, you build things for you know, part of our comprehensive plan is, is pedestrian walkability and you, you build connections so that people can, can access things.
If I may as well, just with respect to the other three waivers, those are waivers that we have granted in the past. We don't, this isn't in a specific area where we see a lot of flooding issues that we've seen other places with respect to the impervious and meadow condition, the first waiver. The stormwater management pipe size, we're very comfortable with what they propose. It's a 12 inch instead of 15 in one specific area. And the water quality reductions was a specific study that was done related to sinkhole formation. So for the purposes of least of recommendation, we would support all four.
Are there any other comments, questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item, please.
Question and action on the preliminary final land development plan for 101 North, North Walnut Street.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Miller seconds. So we have a properly moved and seconded. Uh, and now for the discussion.
I'm gonna agree, sorry.
No, I, I'm, you know, being the liaison to the planning commission. They, I don't know how many people are aware that the planning commission did not either agree to the plan or deny the plan. For each of those, a motion was made. And I mean, it was brought up and nobody nobody endorsed the motion, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So the planning commission did not give their seal of approval in essence to this. So you probably should know that. And the big, the big picture was the, the traffic situation that's already bad there, especially in the late afternoon during rush hour and the difficulty for people having to make a left out of the business. And then come to the stop sign there at Allen Street and Walnut. So I think that was probably and I don't know Greg, did you agree that would probably, that was probably the sticking point for everybody there.
Yeah, so rather unique situation where, you know, no action was actually really kind of stamped. So I, I think it's a situation that there was a little concern about, and this concern existed from day one, you know, about how much is going on the property. You know, what kind of impact it's going to have. The, the reality is this, it is, it's in the old town district, which is a little, little weird. You know, so it does allow for a number of mixed uses and some other things. So, you know, the, the actual uses on the property are permitted. Um, I, I think that, you know, over the past four years, we've at least gotten to the point where we've come to some reasonable agreement as to what, you know, what will quote unquote fit? And be able to, you know, be managed with stormwater and traffic and everything else. So the best I got.
I'm curious, maybe this question for Mr. Patel. Did you do a study as to or in your in developing this plan, you know, what is the study or did you do a study to determine what type of retail store? Why did you pick retail store as the type of establishment? And why did you go with that particular size? Just curious from, from that aspect. What you envision your tenant to be and and why you went with that particular size unit?
So if I can answer this correctly, originally like we proposed was somewhere around 56 underscore feet. And there was a retail personal use and fast food, but then going back on a traffic study and everything and suggestion by the town saying, you know, the traffic flow is going to be higher and according to the uses. So we took the advice from the township and we honor the suggestion from the township and will try to minimize and going back into the traffic study again. The retail, because it's already been retail store, so the 90% is the same consumer is going to be staying in their parking lot. So it's not like we are flowing more people from Allen Street or the Walnut Street is the same traffic flow right now going into the Walnut Street or the Allen Street. Is the same consumer we have, we're just going to target it. It's not like we're going to try to pull more people from like three mile or four mile and it's going to really impact traffic. So, and like we said, it retail, the reason we pick it because that's only the kind of, kind of bringing the traffic flow down.
Okay. Thank you for that answer.
You're welcome.
I think it's prudent as well to make comment and we had this situation come up across the street. You know, where we're, we're essentially going to be approving or, or potentially taking action on a plan that proposes a retail store. If indeed somebody comes in in the future, whether it be Mr. Patel or somebody else, to be able to do something else, they need to be aware that, for example, the traffic study is based on a retail store. And, you know, sewer usage is based on retail store. We've had problems in the past where people have come forward with proposed uses and not realize that that is, you know, not what the plan was approved for. Not to say that they couldn't be done, but there'd be additional work to be done if indeed some of those uses change in the future. Or are never, you know, installed as a.
And the current zoning is Old Town. It's like, that's correct.
That is correct.
So that opened, that's a pretty wide array of uses.
Yeah, and Mr. Patel's right. I mean, there was, the driving factor was the traffic. So, you know, it's obviously we already kind of know that, that if, if those uses were attempted to be changed, that, that they're going to have a problem, a further problem, being able to meet other, other requirements.
I mean, from my perspective, I'd like to see, and I mentioned this earlier, the connectivity and I've brought it up before with other land development plans that have come before council is, and you know, we also discussed it in our comprehensive plan meetings is making sure there's connections between walkways and I'd really like to see a connection between the walkway in front of the retail store and the existing convenience store connect with other existing pedestrian paths so that people aren't crossing where they shouldn't be. I know people will go where they want to go, but it will provide them a path and believe that they'll use it. That's just from, from a planning perspective, it would make more sense to me to have pedestrian connections that that are there and that makes sense and conform with what our comprehensive plan says, which is, you know, making connections for, for walkability.
So if I understand your question rightly, so right now we do have a walkway on the Allen Street and we do have a walkway on the front of the Walnut Street. So I'm trying to understand the question. So you want.
Sure. So take a, if you take a look at the plan, there's a proposed sidewalk that is in front of the retail establishment, I believe. It goes the length of the of the parking spaces. And it ends right there at the end of the peninsula for the green, the green space at the end of the last parking space. So you could just continue that sidewalk and connect it with the, the, the East Allen Street sidewalk. And then you could connect the sidewalk in front of the convenience store with the sidewalk that is on on Walnut Street.
And I, I don't want to make any commitment, but if that, if that's something be doable through the engineer and if it's everybody agree, I think it's doable. I'm just, I, I, I'm not just, I don't have the plan in front of me, but I, I have a kind of visual, what are you talking about it? So it's kind of doable to me. I don't think so. That should be any bigger issue out of it.
That, that would, I would prefer to see that because that would conform better with what we're trying to foster with more walkability and better connection. Something I have brought up a lot with the various land development plans that have come before council. So that would be that would, that would be my request that you take a look at doing that.
Uh, this is Denny Peters from Peters Consultants. We prepared the plans. Uh, we have the plans in front of us. I, I believe your suggestion could be accommodated on both Allen Street and also on Walnut Street.
Thank you. Maybe this question for Solicitor Cassidy, should we make that an official condition of the approval or is it, is that okay that their agreement is just, is, is okay?
Oh. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm having some video issues on my end, so I apologize. So if council is is inclined to approve this, this land development plan conditionally, this should be one of the conditions that the the landowners engineer revise the plans to address these concerns. And to meet with it would have to be with, with staff's approval with respect to those revisions for the addition of the sidewalks on Walnut and Allen Street.
That's fair.
Now, I, I believe there are other comments from Panoni, from Mr. Rogowski regarding the, the, the land development plan that are, remain outstanding. I don't know if, if those are conditions and I defer to Mr. Rogowski, if those are, are conditions that could be satisfied moving forward if, if council were to approve the plan conditionally. Or if there are conditions that are simply non-compliant with the, with the SADO.
Like the, the conditions proposed in our memo, which is dated March the 20th, 2001. Are all essentially either administrative issues or some planned cleanup issues. So there, there's no comments that I feel in there that are what I'll call deal killers. But at the same time, we would also recommend per your suggestion that any conditional approval be based on satisfactory meaning of those particular comments.
Agreed.
Okay, well, I would add that condition to my second if it's a, if the person who made the motion is agreeable to.
I believe it was John made the motion. Am I correct? Mr. Anthony made the motion. Mr. Anthony, are you willing to change your motion to include the aforementioned addition?
Yes.
What, I, as far as the, in your memo, Engineer Rogowski, there's the traffic impact study. It says that it's currently still under review. Yeah, that had been, that was a, a comment from back in March. We, those issues on the borough side, they still have to go get a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT. So there's a number of things that they would have to do. That's detailed actually further up in the to satisfy PennDOT still. So this would be a conditional approval, but we are comfortable with the traffic study as it currently stands. Do traffic studies normally take into account increased populations in areas and surrounding areas? Yeah. And in fact, you know, most of what we're talking about here with respect to level of service drops is projected 10 years away. So and it uses base background growth factors, you know, for Cumberland County and things like that to be able to attempt to project out beyond that area. So.
Um, I, I think everybody should think long and hard about the fact that our planning commission was not willing to endorse this land development plan.
Congressman Hellman, I mean, I, I do agree with you to a certain degree on that. I think, you know, I'm hesitant and I've, I've given this a lot of thought in that at the same time, the planning commission also didn't take a vote to deny the plan. Um, because both motions failed for a lack of a second. So I'm it leaves us in, in a situation where we have no guidance either way. So.
Well, but also that there, they're a lot more used to looking at these kind of things than than, than we are in council. I just, that's like I said, I, I agree with what you just said, Kyle and but yeah. Just, just know that the planning commission did not endorse this.
Could we elaborate any further on that? I mean, do we, do we know beyond, I, I read the minutes and was not very informative. But do we know what the, some of the thinking was? I mean, I know Mr. Dwyer made the first motion to, to recommend and then do we know why, why there was no action taken? Did, did anybody express any opinion?
No, they didn't. Uh, other than the fact that, I mean, they, they denied, they didn't, they failed for a second on actually the the waiver that council just approved. That, that failed for a lack of a second also. And I think and I'm going to, Greg, not to speak for you, but you weren't, you didn't happen to be there that night. Um, and I think Paul, Paul did a, a great job, but I don't think Paul spoke as, you know, as in-depth as what you just did. And Paul's not used to that being put in that situation. So that was one of the first times he's been there in a long, long time. So there was some there, there, I don't know if it was discussed in this detail as what is being discussed here at the planning commission. So there were some, some hesitancies on their part. When it came time for the plan, it was discussed and yes, Mr. Dwyer made the motion at the, at the planning commission meeting to approve it conditionally. With the waivers and based on Engineer Rogowski's March 20th memo. Uh, it failed for a lack of a second. And then Mr. Stoner, who was, who's on the planning commission made the, made the motion to deny. Um, and it failed for a lack of a second. So they, they didn't endorse it, but they also didn't deny it. And that's, that's kind of the situation. And this is the, this is the plan that we've had for many, many, many extensions on. As Greg said, I think he mentioned four years ago is when it was originally submitted with a different engineering firm. And that, when that was the other engineering firm had it, council did actually deny this plan. Because things weren't being changed. They went with Mr., with Mr. Peters's group. And they've come in, they've been very responsive to the requests that, that Greg has made, the requests that we've made from staff point of view. This is a tough, tough plan. This is a very tough plan. Um, it's a tough location. The zoning being Old Town is a, is a hindrance, but it also will give us some, some control over what is being put in there. Uh, this is one of the sections that I would like to see in the new zoning ordinance changed to commercial general, which will address some of these issues that we're looking at now. But um, that was the, the gist of the entire discussion at the, at the planning commission meeting. There were some that, you know, agreed to it. There were other ones that didn't like the, like the, the idea of basically passing it with that, with that traffic study there.
Thank you. Question, another question I had. Are there any plans for changes to the existing building, any renovation or Um, are there any plans for changes to the existing building? Any renovation or exterior improvement or just going to remain as is as part of this project?
I'd have to defer to Mr. Patel or, or, um, Mr. Peters on that.
So if I can answer this correctly, uh, the current, uh, convenience store, no, we don't have any plan for to extend it or the remodeling. Yeah, we try to make it better for community to look wise. If that's kind of come up in a, something we want to match of like color or anything, but nothing, we don't have anything to expand. That building going to be leave it as it is.
Okay.
Kyle, there are going to be some beneficial improvements, um, to the sewer system, um, that exits the existing building, um, as part of this project. So there is one unseen, uh, improvement that will occur to the existing building.
Any stormwater improvements that would have any effect?
Well, yeah.
Or any detrimental effect?
No, no. I mean, once again, they're, they're all incestuously intertwined. So, you know, for the purposes of stormwater, they all tie together at the same point. And the same is true of the sanitary sewer, but, um, so, so both of those kinds of systems will serve both facilities. It will be, you know, brought to current standards.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right. So the motion now is as stated with the addition of the sidewalk concerns.
Yes.
So how do we want a word would, uh, Mike Cassidy, I'm speaking to you now. Could you give us some verbiage, please?
Yeah, sure. So it would be a motion, it would be a, a motion to a, approve the, uh, the pending land development plan. Um, as submitted, um, subject to condition number one, uh, being the addition of the, uh, sidewalks along Allen and Walnut Streets. Um, to, uh, uh, address the concerns of council, subject to final approval by, um, borough staff and, uh, Mr. Rogalski. And condition two, being satisfaction of all outstanding comments on, uh, the Panoni's, uh, engineering review of the plan.
So moved.
A second.
Thank you, John. And thank you, Kyle. All right. So it's properly moved. And second, is there any further discussion on the new motion?
Councilman Weber, um, there's a gentleman from the audience, uh, actually Mr. Stoner from the planning commission has his hand up.
Okay. Mr. Stoner, are you there? I don't see him anywhere on my.
I just asked him to unmute.
Mark, are you there?
I don't know. I've.
Oh, here he is. I see him now. I don't see him, but.
It appears he tried to unmute his phone, but wasn't able to. It looked like the microphone came off, but then it went right back on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mark, try again to unmute your phone. It's blinking, but it's not unmuting. Technology is a wonderful thing. Except when it doesn't work.
It keeps muting them.
You don't have him muted, right, Roger?
No, I do not. I've hit him a couple of times to ask him to unmute and it's not. For some reason, it's not unmuting.
Would, would this, uh, um, plan be subject to review by Harbor at all since it's in the old town?
No. This isn't in the historic history.
Solicitor Cassidy, was your, the condition number one, was that for connection of the two sidewalks? Yeah?
Y- yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I believe that, that's what Mr. Miller was asking for.
That was the intent, which I think, you know, with, with the approval there of the manager and the engineers.
Yeah, I believe Mark is unmuted.
Okay. Mr. Stoner, you have the mic. Now where'd he go?
Connecting to audio.
I'd like to give him the opportunity to speak, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know what's going on. It's not on, it's not on our end. I.
Well, can we wait 30 seconds and then see what happens? All right, while we're waiting, just a point of reference. For pedestrians and Kyle, you bring up a great point. I, I do agree with you on this. Um, I have been at that intersection many times at Allen trying to turn left onto Walnut to head north. And I've observed people from the library trying to cross toward where Snappers is or vice versa. And it's virtually impossible. And the traffic does not stop for them. Um, you know, which is another issue. I'm, I know, but still, uh, increased pedestrian traffic, if there was another way, another route for them to, you know, to walk from this complex, from Mr. Patel's complex would be quite beneficial, I think. All right. I think our 30 seconds is up. I'm sorry, Mark, we, we can't get your audio to come on. Um, so I apologize for that, but I don't think it's on our end. So we have a, a proper motion now and second. I hear no further discussion, so we're going to ask Mrs. Martin to do her thing.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
No.
And I have a no as well.
Yeah, I am as well.
Uh, maybe we better take a roll call.
Please do.
Okay. Excuse me, ma'am. Agerton.
Yeah.
Anthony.
Yes.
Booker.
No.
Right. Miller?
Yes.
Hellman.
No.
Weber?
No.
Whitcomb?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item.
Discussion in action to approve a special event permit application for a public sale at three eighteen, three twenty and three twenty-two West Allen Street in the alley to the rear of the properties on Saturday, May eighth, two thousand twenty-one, from nine AM to four PM, attachment five.
We hear a motion.
Are they going to close the alley?
So moved.
Yes, they are. We'll get to your question in a minute. Rodney, we have a motion from Mr. Anthony. Is there a second?
Second.
And that was you, Rodney?
Yes.
Okay. So now we have a motion and a second. And now Rodney, your question is?
The question is, are they going to close the alley from Washington Street to the alley?
Kind of. Kind of. They're going to have a road closed ahead, basically going to close it behind those three addresses and, um, well, basically Washington Street and those three addresses. And then there'll be a road closed sign up at the alley behind a beer distributor.
Okay, all right. Now that's, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion passes. Next item, please.
Discussion in action on the special event permit application for the Memorial Day Parade to be held May thirty-first, twenty twenty, from ten AM to eleven AM, attachment six.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rodney. Any discussion?
Would, would this be like a full-blown parade?
Yeah, and I think, um, Mr. Wardle and, uh, Chief Myers may have some discussion points on this.
Go ahead, Nate. Your hand's up. I can't hear you.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Chief Myers have reached out to me about this and while I understand certainly the need to honor Memorial Day, I, I'm, I have concerns about potential areas where large groups of people may be gathered in one place and us still not being at a point where we're ready to do that for Memorial Day. I mean, obviously we have already expressed our concerns for Jubilee Day, and I know that that's not on the topic for tonight, but I, I do have concerns over passing this and the precedent it may set for activities in the borough.
Thank you.
I'm not saying no, I'm not saying no, like, um, I mean, at what point do we say, okay, we're probably going to have to like at least dip our toe in the water to get back to normal a little bit?
So I don't think it's our job to dip our toe back to normal. I think that my, my love convenience or comfort would be that the, everyone has been able to have the opportunity to be vaccinated. Uh, me, what is the goal now for everyone to have the opportunity to be vaccinated? Do you know that, sweetie?
Everyone's going to be eligible to be vaccinated on the nineteenth, but the timeline that it's going to take to get there is not going to be the nineteenth. And of course, that's, uh, depending on whether people are getting their first, uh, one dose or two dose set. And the majority of people are going to get a two dose set based on the allocations we're receiving from the federal government.
Yeah, I, I just think that it, for me, yes, I want to return to normal, but I also think to be responsible stewards and accept the example is that we should not be promoting gathering events until we're at that point where everyone who could have received the vaccine has the opportunity. I know not everyone will take the opportunity to receive the vaccine. That is their choice. But right now, because we know it's going to take us a little bit longer to get the vaccine into the arms of people. I do not feel comfortable with large gatherings, especially with at-risk, um, you know, attendees at the parade. I think that I just, I'm still not comfortable with it.
Uh, did the cemetery, has the cemetery approved? And do they have to approve the, um, gathering that happens there? Scott?
No, we've never really had any kind of, uh, formal, uh, way of approving anything. Really, it's just become such a custom that, uh, we don't even get asked anymore. It just happens.
Right. Yeah, it's difficult. I don't, I don't.
Yeah, and, and I think like going to the cemetery and laying wreaths, we can promote wearing masks and that people going to individual tombstones versus maybe a block of people gathering. I just think that it's our responsibility to promote safety. And I don't want to be on the wrong side of this. I'd rather be cautious.
I think at certain extent parades, you know, it does promote people to gather, but at the same time, a lot of it's people from their own, groups um, gathering together. But my concern would be then everybody gathering together at cemetery where you would have all the various groups converge. Um, that would be the concern for me. And it's really close to to the eligibility for everybody to be vaccinated and.
Yeah, the interesting thing to me is that, that, the request on the permit doesn't really, kind of like what Scott said, doesn't really address the ceremony at the cemetery. It just says it begins at point A and ends at cemetery. Um, so it's the gathering at the cemetery that bothers me more than the parade. Because traditionally that parade is not a big parade. It's not like the Halloween parade or.
Uh, people walk up, people walk up with friends and people who they're already spending time with anyway, and they'll walk up to watch the parade and then leave. But if they go up to the cemetery and there's a gathering and a service.
That's correct.
Um, that's, that's sort of where the concern comes in, where everybody's gathering together. At the same time, we also didn't, we also sent the Jubilee Day application back with, because they never produced a COVID nineteen now or mentioned the mitigation effort for COVID nineteen in the application. We're in a similar situation here where there's no mention of what, you know, they're doing, you know, safety wise. So that would be my concern is we need to maintain, um, a level of asking the same thing from, from everyone.
All right. So would it be? I know we're getting into April here, um, but would it be prudent to table this discussion pending some sort of COVID mitigation plan from the organizers, similar to what we're doing with Jubilee Day, with all the other events, Community Day, et cetera, et cetera. Um, this is no different.
Yeah, I think I agree with what you're saying because I feel like, um, Jubilee Day is not long after Memorial Day and we're giving them the opportunity to put forth their best, uh, best effort to have the event. And I think the, this, they should have the same courtesy.
Well, I'm going to speak to, I'm going to speak to Jubilee Day down under, running other business, but, um, uh, Chief Myers has reached out to the organizers of this, and I think she had, might have some, um, insight into some of the stuff that was going on with this, this application also.
Good.
Well, anyone who's ever been to this parade should be aware of the fact that on Frederick Street, there are people standing shoulder to shoulder, three and four people deep. Um, on Simpson Street in the area of CBS. You can see them all lined up along there, shoulder to shoulder. Um, so it is a, it is an event where I don't know if they're all from the same family, but I'm pretty sure all those folks on Frederick Street are not. Um, it's, it's larger than, than you may think as it gets closer to the cemetery. And I, I've been doing that parade for probably thirty-five of thirty-eight years. Maybe I've missed one or two. But, um, the organizers, uh, basically put this forward for your consideration. I spoke to them about it and explained the circumstances to them, same kind of thing I did last year. Um, but I believe they are going to want to have something in the cemetery even if they're not allowed to have the parade. That's pretty much what I got from them. So, um, I, they don't have, I'm pretty sure you're not going to see as comprehensive a plan from them either as who did from the Jubilee Day folks. But I can certainly take it back to them.
Chief, did this event happen last year as well?
It did not. No. Um, we spoke about it and, and talked about the fact that it was not a good idea. And last year they did something very, very small in the cemetery. Um, was a drive-through kind of a thing, um, because they and it is hard because you want to commemorate the veterans, but you also do not want to put yourself in the position where you're allowing sprouts that we're not quite ready for yet. So.
I mean, I know exactly what it looks like. I've lived here my entire life and I live a half a block away and walk down to it every single year. So I, my concern would be that we're not exactly ready for the crowd size that the Frederick Street side of this sees and then in the cemetery. So I, let's, I'll make a motion to table and we'll go back and get some feedback from them on what their COVID mitigation, you know, safety plan would be.
Okay, we have a motion to table, which does not require a second. Um, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion is table pending further information. Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item, discussion in action to award the twenty twenty-one mowing contract. Um, I must apologize with the rushed schedule. apologize with the rushed schedule. Um, I got those out to everyone today as soon as we opened the bids this afternoon, and we could get them tabulated. Um, none of the bidders or anyone had asked for, um, packets was at the bid opening. Um, that's why the extra sheet was included, uh, that there was a witness at the opening, um, that recorded all them as I was opening the, the packets. So, um, you have them there in front of you, and my memo was included in that, um, email.
All right, just a point of order. Mr. Cassidy, do I need to review that publicly, or is the addition of that in their packets su- su- sufficient?
Mr. President, I think it makes sense to at least, um, announce what the, what the three bids were for the, um, the, the per acre pricing and to confirm the identity of the, uh, the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, so we had three bidders that we received information from. The price per acre estimated from bidder number one was $35, bidder number two was $33, and bidder number three was $29.75. It brings us to an estimated total for bidder number one of $1,942.50, number two, $1,831.50, and number three, $1,651.13, and the low bidder is J&amp;A Landscape, Lawn Care and Landscape from Newville, Pennsylvania.
So, to be clear, Mr. President, the, um, council is required to do one of two things, either, uh, reject all bids or award the bid to the lowest responsible bidder. That's a requirement under the Borough code, and so in this case, uh, that would be J&amp;A Lawn Care, or Lawn Care, brother.
So, the, um, the motion should read, um, that we award the bid to J&amp;A Lawrence and Landscape for mowing services for the Borough Mechanicsburg. So, do we have, could we have that motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Booker, and a second.
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. J&amp;A Landscape, Lawn Care and Landscape will be taking care of our mowing, and the way the grass is growing, they need to get here soon.
I'm gonna ask him if he can get here this week.
Very good.
I do have a follow-up question for that.
Yes, sir.
Um, did we have to use our interim plan at all to remove the grass?
No, um, we didn't. Uh, the only thing that's been growing right now in the park, uh, until this week, has been the garlic, uh, the wild garlic. So, uh, I noticed that this morning. Um, we have a beautiful crop of wild garlic growing, but that's about the extent of it right now.
Excellent. Harvest it and sell it.
How many, how many mows do, do we typically get out? How many, um?
Usually, once a week, um, they're in, um, there was some discussion at the, at the pre-bid meeting about what day of the week. Uh, I, I kinda personally would like Friday, because that way it looks nice for the weekend, um, but sometimes you have rain and stuff like that, so they can balance their schedule. Um, J&amp;A, um, is a division of, um, the Put It On The Ground Tree Service that did the 48 trees for us in the park. Um, so they're familiar with the park. They know what's there, um, and, uh, they, they did a pretty good job for us up there when they were doing the trees.
Do, do you think that that would put us over the top for our, our line item for this year for the budget?
No, actually, it's lower than what we budgeted. Um, we were, we were at $30 an acre, um, so he's gonna be a little bit under.
Good.
All right, so we, we move on.
Discussion and action. Whoop, sorry.
Go ahead.
Discussion and actions from, one, yeah, let me start again. Discussion and action on the expenditures from all funds for the period beginning March 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2021, Attachment 8. I will read these off.
What, point of order, hold on. Was I, did I fall asleep, or did, did we miss the motion to release the funds for the borough to?
I missed that. I missed that completely. I had some scribbles behind that, and I thought we already did it. I'm sorry. All right. Uh, this would be Agenda Item, uh, 3 from the bottom. Discussion and action to release all funds in the Mechanicsburg Borough Community Day account to the Downtown Mechanicsburg Partnership for use at this and future Community Day events as per the recommendation from the Municipal and Community Outreach Committee, Attachment 7.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? That, thank you, Mr. Anthony. A second?
A second.
And a second for Mr. Miller. Any discussion? So this removes our staff from having to do any of the, or not?
No, not necessar- Not necessarily. We'll still contribute for making sure the park is set up.
No, I'm talking about the financial end of it.
Yes.
Thank you. The rest of it, though, we're helping with.
Correct.
Yeah, that was mine, intent of my question. Sorry. I didn't make that very clear. All right. Uh, any other discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
All right, now we're back on track, Mr. Sizerzki.
Yes, we are. Discussion and action on the expenditures from all funds for the period beginning March 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2021, Attachment 8, and, uh, the Fair Fund was $10,842.77. The General Fund was $153,160.65. The Highway Fund was $20,985.84. The Pool Fund was $244.87, and the Capital Fund was $35,000.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries, and the bills will be paid. All right, this time in the, of the meeting, we, uh, open for a second chance for citizens to make comment. If you have a comment, please, uh, use your raise hand signal, and hopefully your audio will work. I'm not seeing any. All right, is there any other business? We'll start with the mayor. Do you have any other business?
Nothing at this time, although I did hike that, the trail sometime back between Mechanicsburg and Gillsburg. You better have good, good, uh, good pants, because of a lot of briars on that path going down there. End of report.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll start with then with, uh, continue with Mrs. Martin. Any comments?
Just hand in your ethics forms, please.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Boyer?
No comment. Thank you.
All right, um, Chief Neff?
No comment.
Thank you. Uh, Nate Wardle?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Engineer Rogowski?
All good. Thank you.
Thank you. Solicitor Cassidy?
Uh, no comment. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, so we'll go, begin with council people now, and we'll start with Mr. Anthony.
Uh, just a quick comment of gratitude. We have such great people that are supporting us and are, are making our decisions. It was very evident tonight, and it was some of the decisions we made tonight, they were tough, and so, uh, I just wanna thank all of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Agerton?
I have nothing else tonight. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Miller?
Joe, I have a question, uh, just came to me with, with the opening of, of all the, the vaccine, um, eligibility, and that is, do we have, uh, for the borough a vaccination plan, or is there anything we need to develop for our personnel, um, to, to have everyone vaccinated that wants to get vaccinated, or is that, um, maybe a, a topic for an executive session discussion?
Police department's taking care of.
Does that mean you're fully vaccinated?
Everyone that wanted to be is, yes.
That's great.
And I would say the same thing about the borough staff. I mean, they're, they're, most of them are making the personal choice to either get vaccinated or they choose not to get vaccinated. We are still wearing masks, um, when there's people come in the office, um, you know, and doing what we can to, to keep the, the exposures to a minimum. Uh, we are still closed, as a matter of fact, to the public, so, um, do we have people come in by appointment only?
So, um, I'll let it up to Nate. I, the last question that I guess I have is for Nate is, is there anything you would recommend that we should be doing it personnel-wise, or is, are we doing enough right now for the vaccination plan?
No, I think that what's been done has been in accordance, uh, of course, individual groups may make it mandatory for people to be vaccinated, but that's usually very difficult, and, um, for a local government agency would probably be a very difficult sell and also get lots of ire directed at you. Um, I think local government workers, including elected officials, are in Phase 1C, so if you have not been vaccinated yet, um, local, local elected officials are eligible in 1C before Phase 2. Um, but I think that the borough has done everything properly. I believe most of the fire department also has had the opportunity to be vaccinated based on the email I received at one point from Gary, so I think everybody's on the right pa- path.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pelman?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Whitcomb?
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sizerzki?
Uh, yeah, real quick, the Jubilee Day, um, council directed the, um, staff, uh, Chief Myers, Chief Neff, and Nate Wardle to review the, um, plan that they, the Jubilee Day Committee sent over. Um, it's been reviewed, it's been returned to them. I spoke to Jeff, um, Palm today. Uh, he was asking what seems to be the sticking points lately as far as giving approval. Um, I think from the meeting that we had, uh, Friday two weeks ago, uh, because I'm one of the Jubilee Day Committee as far as, you know, the organization committee, um, one of the things that was brought up was the fact that, um, the police, the surrounding police that Chief Myers contacts to come in are still, uh, they haven't changed their, we're not coming notice. So, um, they're, they're not sending people in to help out to do this thing, and I think that's, that's gonna be the final point, uh, to all of this, um, along with, I think, what some of the comments Nate made, uh, were very point-on. Um, Chief Myers had some very valid points, and Chief Neff brought up some very valid points. So, um, the committee is taking those under consideration and looking at that going forward. Uh, Jeff Palm did contact me today and ask me what the status was. Um, the status is the same as what it was before. Um, the, the police, the surrounding police is not helping, are not gonna send people to help, um, due to the situation.
Has there been talk of any, uh, like pivot into a, maybe a scaled back, like small, like a food truck festival or something instead?
Um, What they discussed was potentially doing a, a vaccination site at, like, the pool. Uh, the problem with it is, was open that day. Um, so that's gonna be a problem there, and food trucks and stuff. Um, that was, you know, putting a tent up in that parking lot is a, is a problem. So, um, there was some talk about doing different things that day, but, um, all of them involve, you know, it, there's other issues going on. That's in the middle of summer, and, you know, right after school, that's out, so there were, there were other issues involved with that, too.
Yeah, anything else?
All I have, sir.
Okay, did I miss anybody?
I do not have anything, uh, President.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I'm going up by my screen trying to do alphabetic order, and I skipped you, Joe. I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
You, you still got a second chance here.
No, I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Okay, in closing, uh, this is not related to anything that we've talked about tonight, but I thought it'd be a good time to bring it up. Um, those of you who are alumni or who are parents of alumni, receive, uh, a, um, newsletter from the Alumni Association each year. It's called The Roar. Uh, the issue will be coming out shortly, and in there, there is mention of something called Read A Book, and it's in support of the Alumni Association. Uh, one of my classmates, Doug Quinn, has, um, uh, written a book, um, and it's a, it's a fictional future of professional basketball, uh, basically holographic, um, basketball thing. But at any rate, um, the price of this, this is available, uh, published on Kindle and Amazon only. The price is only $2.99. You can go on, if you're a Kindle person, you can go on and get it pretty quickly. Um, Amazon Prime members can read it for free, and the money still goes into the, uh, goes directly into the scholarship fund of the Alumni Association. Um, it's an interesting take on attendance at sporting events due to coronavirus, and he's taken the time to write this book. He includes the names of some of, uh, our classmates and has changed them slightly to protect the innocent. Um, but it's a, it's a very interesting thing, and, uh, if you can get the word out and help the Alumni Association by spending three bucks, um, it comes back to our scholarship fund. So, I'd appreciate it if you would, uh, be able to do that. One of the people that it's dedicated to is Fred Kearney. I don't know if any of you knew Fred. Fred graduated with us in 1967 and shortly after graduation, uh, passed away, and so, uh, the book is dedicated to him, and, uh, it's really kind of a cool, uh, cool thing. Uh, it's also available. He's having an, uh, a speaker, I guess you would call him, uh, do this as a, uh, an audiobook, and it's really, I've heard some excerpts of it. It's really, really good, and it does hold your attention. So, uh, just wanted to throw that out there, and I wanted to thank everybody for their time, and I agree with John. Some of the decisions we have to make are not easy, and I appreciate the discussion, because I think it's good for us as it is for the borough. And with that, I hear no other comments. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.